I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the City Council Meeting for Business of the City of Montgomery. It is exactly 6:00 PM. I'd like to also note that TJ Wilkerson will not be in attendance, however, we do have a forum. With that, Carol Lindley, would you be in location this evening?
Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be here tonight and give us the courage and the strength to make it through this meeting tonight with our agenda items. Thank you.
Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll begin with the United States flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a one nation, under God, individual, representative, and justice for all.
The Texas flag?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one individual.
It feels good to be back in here, I have to say. This is great, it's been over a year, and great job. We've updated all of our AVs, so it's exciting. All right, Visitor and Citizens Forum. So we've got two things on the agenda this evening. The first one would be the introduction of new Lions Club President Patty Dugan. But we have Mr. Kevin Smith here. If you'd like to come to the podium, Kevin, I know you've got a few words, but appreciate it.
Good evening, all. I want to thank the Montgomery City Council, their fourth mayor, for giving us this time. Patty has started a new job, and she can work. She's a debt paid member of our society. I'm the current president of the Montgomery Lions Club, and Patty is going to be the president next year. So at another time, I'd love to break her by introducing her to you.
Thank you.
What is a Lions Club? Lions Club International is the largest service organization in the world, it's over 104 years old. We claim 102 million lions worldwide, working out of over 140 countries. Where there's a disaster, the lions are normally the second group there, the first group are the victims themselves. In Texas, we have 16 districts, and in our district, we have 54 independent clubs. The way the Lions work is from the bottom up. It's about local community involvement. In the Clay County area, we have nine separate clubs. Where there's a need, there's a lion. All Lions Clubs are independent of each other, but we fall under an umbrella of resources for umbrella of all those districts. Each club has its own personnel. They respond to the needs of the areas they serve. Your Montgomery Club, your Montgomery Lions Club services Montgomery, the Montgomery area. We've served under several different charters. The latest one was stood up in 1992. Before my time, the Montgomery Lions Club brought services down, sponsored and participated in seasonal celebrations like Easter Mugs, Christmas parades, World of Delight parades, Flag parades, all kinds of pride parades. In the 1920s, Helen Keller enlisted the Lions to be her max of long flights. Helen Keller, how many people know her story? Long flight. Yeah, I don't know if she did. You've had to see me. To this day, we collect and recycle eyeglasses. Several places we've done, we prop off, we take them into our recycle center in Conroe, where they're sorted, cold, clean. Ones that were fecal and redistributing, they're cataloged. And they're used locally, they're used statewide, and they're sent overseas on business. The first call is local. We have recently enlisted another optometrist to help us. Now, how can an optometrist help us? If there's a local need for vision screening, we can do that. Our club is certified to do vision screening. Eye damage screening. What we do is we have a machine that's recurrent to operate that checks the dimensions of the eyeball, and with that, we can refer them to an optometrist for an examination. In the past, we've done 30 or 40 sets of eyeglasses. Lately, with COVID, a lot of that has gone down, we expect it to come back, that's why we created another relationship. In cooperation with the city, the county, the local chamber, we've developed many additional avenues of service for our community. In the past four years, we've inspected groups, built media compliant wheelchair ramps, renovated the community building, donated trees to the for praters playing on Arbor Day, conducted vision screening like we just talked about. We've developed relationships with other local charities like Wheels Up Wheels, Yes to Youth, Pray Zone, Hope and Healing for Warriors, Kids Fish Fest, Gatsby Join for Hope, just to name a few. There's also local task force we're involved with, with suicide prevention. We have joined with the city and the county in the recent past in support of World of Delight parade, seasonal celebrations, where we sold and collected tickets of the parking, operated shelves, and any other booths within the building. What about our kids, our future? We have approved a Leo program at Montgomery High School. We laid the groundwork for the Lake Forest Leo Club that was just started last week. COVID has bothered us all, but we were still able to get this done. During football season, you probably see us in our vests, in our buckets, and we're accepting donations for high school scholarships. We fund somewhere between $6 and $10 scholarships a year. Those are $1,000 scholarships. What we started a couple of years ago was we started not only with the four-year institutions, but we opened up the superior and the grade schools. I could talk a lot more, I don't have time. So let me fish up. I've got to hand it out, for you guys on this. I want to say the best for last, and last year's COVID situation cheated Montgomery out of their first music and live festival. This year, the moon, the stars, and the planets all aligned, and the city said through it, and the weather said we will permit it. And a fearless promoter as married men and women put together a bunch of volunteers and made it work. Very successful outing. The Lions were tasked with operating the parking. We were expecting between 1,500 and 2,000 partners, we've got over 4,000. But probably didn't seem as smooth as it was supposed to. We'll be better next year, we're going to make the lesson learned in the past in the next year. We'll be much better next year. You think it went pretty well this year?
You had great feedback.
The longest... What I'm most proud of, the Montgomery Lions Club, is our bingo. Most of our opportunity. It's been done through generations, it's not something that I brought to the party, it's been something that I've seen some things that are here, there, and we appreciate it. It's an opportunity where we have two hours, and we allow many different generations of Montgomery residents to mingle, to laugh, communicate, have fun, without the company facing the face of people having speaking on them. That makes my heart grow stronger. The bingo would not be possible without the use of the old community buildings. The building that came from the history of Montgomery and the community that has youth to thank for. We were able to pull another rabbit out of the hat in March. Our standard bingo game turned into a little bit more than that. We were able to vaccinate with coordination with the county health department. They gave them additional shots that they hadn't been given for weeks. And we called a couple of people, one of them sits right there, and there are several other community leaders that we called, and we were able to get 40-plus people from the community that heard COVID shock, whether they got the system and whether or not they got the sex. I sure hope they did, but we had no control over that. But it's amazing what you can do when you open your eyes to it. What I love to do is invite everybody here to our next bingo, which is a big event. Like I said, it's a community building. Doors open at 6:30, then we start calling numbers and stuff. It will get a taste of what Lions is all about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right. The second item on our agenda is energy update by Brittany Chandler, customer service manager. No, it just stays at the podium.
So I'm here, and some of it, and I can share. My name is Brittany Chandler, I'm a customer manager for this area, covering six halls in there. But thank you so much for having us. My kid is seeing one person like, he's got, like, just like an area, it's messy. Good to be back, and thank you for having us. Okay, about the storm and what happened, and then a little bit about how to get information during these weather events. And I just want to, you know, spend a little bit of time on these frequent questions that we've had, like, you know, from the storm, which are really touching on, they kind of work in reverse, they kind of touch on fuel costs, that's a frequent question we've had since the first storm. Talking about high bills, you know, associated with the department, and talking about getting information specifically about restoration and knowing what's going on during that weather event. Just an energy overview, there's been so much talk, you know, going on right now that really is about, you know, ERCOT, you hear about CenterPoint, you know, what's going to be coming to the market, and I just want to take a second to kind of just pump up energy. We are a regulated, we are a vertical utility. So unlike many other companies that are, you know, we are federally working, we do own the generation and the distribution. So that is a big difference. So we think back to this weather, and obviously, we think back, you know, it wasn't just, you know, we all know that we had a generation shortage that caused us to have to take customer power, we had the blood shut there. It wasn't just the cold temperatures, it wasn't just the rain, it was the storm effects that happened with the sustained long cold temperatures. So when we kind of think back to the start of it, when people was coming, you know, we reached out to all of our, started having those calls, started having those conversations, putting out the conservation messages. We knew that we were going to be hitting, like, in many areas, we did hit an all-time high in that demand, and equal needing power, you know, to the max capacity, and us experiencing this extended cold temperatures and experiencing, you know, hitting rains, plats, all of those things that come with it. Limited ability to get around the streets, just all of those things that are happening at that event. And we did experience some of our generation, you know, just like we saw happening around the state. We were able to have it, but really just kind of talk through at a high level, just kind of make some conversation. But, you know, we definitely had, you know, when it went down, we were able to communicate that back, and thank you for conveying it back with everyone. So we hope that that line of communication was helpful, because we've got our songs and go through, we were talking, you know, once a day, twice a day, several times a day, all day, to you guys, to make sure that we got the message out of what was going on, how long it was going to be out, what those low levels are going to be like, how we're going to get back to full, to full for our customers. So what happened is, you know, when the generation had gone down, we've got this high demand in our system, we couldn't meet the load requirement. We were lucky, we've got the Montgomery County Power Station here that just went online this year, that's 800 megawatts. So that did help us significantly, but definitely shortened the degree of line that we can shed weather because of the act of the rain. So, you know, a lot of great things from us out of that plant. We had that last one, too, that was just, it's true that we were able to borrow that up and out of line. So, you know, looking forward, you know, going through the restoration process, it's not as simple as, you know, whoever we turn the lights back on, or whoever we, through the road shed or ass, you know, that all the lights are going to go back on. We still had storm effects, that we had to do about, you know, creating that weather back into the system, which, you know, clear as means of turning our whole board pick up, but creating all that weather back onto our equipment had some difficulty. We had, you know, some allergies that were caused from the weather, some almost from the ice, vegetation being weighed down on our lines, and lots of different things going on all at one time, just like many other storms. I just, I feel like it had a different feel, because it was a winter storm, but we haven't experienced it since then. So I wanted to touch on that, really kind of walking through, you know, as we went through that process, and then kind of where we can go to get information. So it's just, you know, if I'm a customer and I'm out of power, you know, how am I going to know when my lights are going to be back on? Is there something that interview can tell me? Am I wanting to have all of the information that I can? You know, the best way to do that is to go online, sign up for my energy account online, have an app. I love the app, it's new, it's great. You can go into our outage map, see if your house looks like it's out of power, see if it looks like it's not out of power, you can go in and report it. You can actually click, there's a banner, I had it in my book, there's a banner, it's a poll at the top of that outage map, in the storm event specifically. So now, maybe not on others, but we're fully activated, like we were, with our full system plan and going on. You can actually go into that outage map and click, and see, like, there'll be a poll out there of what's going on, like, what can we share, what do we know, what do we think the estimated restoration times are? You can click down to your house, you can zoom in and out of that map, and you can see maybe to tell that coming out, and you can start about what's going on with the app. And that's just a piece of what the app can do. The app can actually, you can go into the account line, through the app, do different things, you can see your usage, you can report outage, you can change your account information, you can stop, start, stop, move services. There are so many things you can do, and I really just wanted to use this opportunity to really get to target everybody, to get people to using that app. You know, to get signed up online, you did have to, like, if you're like, oh, I've been signed up for years, it's new, and you have to go in and actually lean over to this next one. You know, we'll text message you updates as we do work communication. You can find yourself out, I don't want to get seven in the middle of the night, I want to sleep through it. You can look at, I want quiet time here in these hours. There's a lot of good information, the automated meters are now telling us our daily usage, how we can start to track on this cloud every day, or to see where our bills are going to look like. Things that we had historically had, with a little bit of new technology, are really what everyone is using it, you know, leading up to our spotty insurance share.
It's very user-friendly. After meeting with you the first time, I downloaded it, and it's been extremely intuitive and not very difficult at all, so I highly recommend it as well. I paid my bill on it today, actually.
Yeah. And it's something that would be helpful for us to send out some information that we shared. I would love to, we have to drive people to sign up, if there's a way to help us get that message out, but, you know, a quick question that I get is, how can I get the most updated information? And, you know, our answers are, we're trying to do as much information as possible to our mayors, and we're also trying to update that map as much as possible with as accurate as possible estimated restoration time, too. We're trying to make sure we're doing it. I'm going to pause there and see if you have any questions for me, about the restoration, about the app, I mean, you know, I can answer.
What is energy doing differently to prevent longer load sheds from happening at the event of another disaster? Because, let's face it, we didn't expect to have 100 and 500-year hurricanes and floods four years in a row. We haven't planned to have a once-in-a-lifetime snowpocalypse, but they're here and they're happening. So what are you doing to be proactive in the future, so that when we do have to do load sheds, we're not coming with such a long intervals of time?
So I think that, I'm going to start with, and think about the duration of the load shed, so, a couple things. So we're trying to look at our critical customer list first, and we're going to do some additional reviews to what we've done in the past, to make sure that we're keeping all against circle in the chapter of load distribution. Now, looking even deeper into that, we're trying to find ways that we can make sure that, and just probably in this song, we did the same thing that we did in this one, we're doing additional reviews, but trying to find ways that, and continuously looking, we try to, you know, take people to rotate those outage stability, keep them rolling. That wasn't the case everywhere. Some people felt that, that it couldn't go because there were specs on the storm, and you didn't, the differential wasn't on the map when it looks the same. You're out from a load shed, if you're out from a storm, you know, something on the tree, someone is treeing on line from the ice waiting, it's hard to know that. So I think internally, you know, there's a lot of different conversations about what will happen if this happens, and we expect to have another active emergency. We are, and we're just trying to look at what happened, how can we, because we always look through, find the best ways to serve the customers. And I don't, I'm quite sure, but absolutely, we're trying, everybody will look at, you know, there's a lot of postwork after a storm that happens, a lot in town, we were seeing it, and it was unprecedented.
So I'm probably the only person on City Council, I believe, that is on Mid-South and not on energy. So many of my constituents ended up at my house during this storm, because the longest we were without power was two hours on our rolling blackouts, and that was the maximum. Like, they did a two-hour, and then they did six hours on and 40 minutes off. So for us, I feel like we were tremendously blessed, and I feel like there's a way that energy should be held more accountable to a higher standard. I don't know what the answer is, but that's why I'm saying, how do we lessen this? Because some of the folks in downtown Montgomery were out without power for a week, a week. And so, like, I saw frozen water in bathtub, you know, they filled the bathtub, and inside their house, the bathtub was solid frozen, and that's right here. And maybe the answer is MBC, we need to build a hospital, and they'll keep our city on. I don't know, but...
No, I'd like to see, I have a question, I'd like to look back, have to know the specifics about that one, to know, because that was, that was storm effects, like, that wasn't the whole damages. Because we have power restored by energy, we have power restored by Bill of Rights. So that was, that was a storm event. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, it wasn't a, it wasn't a road shed effect, it was a weather, that's a little more specific.
Well, the one you're talking about, the effect of the area, that was actually, that was the one that was over here on Old Plannersville when I was here with the crews watching. And that was actually a Hurricane Harvey issue that never got fixed. And for the record, Brittany was not on our account, there was someone else that was underserving us. And that was an issue that was never addressed. So now, that has, that has actually been addressed, and should there be an issue, who would that, not saying they won't go out, but I'm just saying that they would be on the rolling, or I would say that they're in a much better place now, because there's been new equipment put in place.
And I'll say this, too. So this is very, very good, because it was something that we've been serious to address, specific location, if you want to guide into that location, it is me, let me do it, I want to do it. I want, I want to make sure that you feel, you know, good and prepared and willing to do this. So I will take that on, like, to us, really, that, absolutely.
Y'all are dynamic. Y'all have been such a blessing to this community, since our town, since you've come on, you've come on like a spitfire, and I text you, call you weekly, and you've gone and walked areas of the town with me to talk about our residents' concerns about poles, our residents' concerns about lighting, concerns about...
We're going to do it later, so...
Energy continuously working, and I appreciate every little, every, not even little, but every point that I make, you come back with an answer or a game plan. And so, kudos, and out of words, y'all doing a awesome job.
We appreciate it.
30 storms, I hear?
I hear two, and I can hear, we're right in the gap, we're trying to hear those things that, like, please set your eye line.
Is there a hotline or a call-in center for if we have citizens that are saying, hey, we know we have a tree on the line, and it could be an issue soon, to be proactive instead of reacting?
It's on me, yeah.
Beautiful.
Seriously, it's easy. You don't need electricity or internet.
I just want to be telling people that.
If you're phone...
If you see something, let's get it done before the next...
I'm telling you, the app is super, is super easy, very intuitive, and you can do everything on.
And if he thinks, you know, the reason you're asking people to help, and that will help people, and if you think it makes a difference, kind of relationship...
We can do something certainly in the water bill, as well as on our social media and our city webpage, just show the app logo and encourage everyone to download it. And even when we have new residents that come in, maybe in our welcoming packages, to also, when we tell them where they go get their services and energy, encourage them to download the app then. Get ahead of it, I think that's a great idea.
So I appreciate y'all's time today.
Good luck! Thank you for all you do, we appreciate it. Very much so. We're going to move on, so if y'all want to step outside, we'll go ahead and move on to our, but y'all can, I want y'all to talk, because I know you're talking.
I want to thank y'all for coming out and looking at our road, and walking the king. He came out and walked the road with me today.
We're going to wrap it up. Yes.
And, look at the street where we need lights and where the poles, several messed up, so I want to thank y'all today.
Yep, thank you for that. Absolutely, yep. Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, the Consents Agenda. Next item on your agenda is number three. Matters related to the approval of minutes of the April 13th, 2021 regular meeting. Number four, consideration of possible action regarding acceptance of the certificate of acceptance for public infrastructure included in the Hills of Town Creek Section 4, project developed in number 2004, including the acceptance of maintenance bond. Item number five, consideration of possible action approval of an interlocal agreement by and between the city of Montgomery and Montgomery County for road and ride away repair and maintenance. Council, you can take these individually or cumulatively, what is your pleasure?
Cumulative.
As a member of the Senate, we take these matters three, four, and five together. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, except for discussion. All of us in favor of accepting three, four, and five cumulatively, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the measure carries, and we will accept three, four, and five cumulatively together. Next item on your agenda, consideration of possible action. Item number six, consideration of possible action to adopt a proclamation proclaimed in April 2021 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Montgomery, Texas. I here have a framed proclamation that I will read. Proclamation, whereas in Texas, more than 4,000 children die from abuse and neglect an average every week, 184 children are confirmed victims daily, and more than seven children are maltreated every hour, and where... And whereas in Montgomery County, last year, we had eight hundred and twenty-six confirmed victims of abuse, five child fatalities and five hundred and twenty-four children in the care of child tech services. Whereas child abuse neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community. And finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are most valuable resources and will shape the future of the state of Texas as well as the great city of Montgomery. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, physical effects that have lasting, lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk to promote the social, emotional and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child group abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, proactive nonprofits and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Montgomery, Texas, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty one as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Montgomery, Texas, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Share a motion or is it discussion?
Yeah, buttons and stickers.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve the proclamation to adopt a proclamation proclaiming April twenty twenty one as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Montgomery, Texas.
It is a move to say that we adopt a proclamation proclaiming April twenty twenty one as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Montgomery, Texas. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of adopting a proclamation proclaiming April twenty twenty one as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Montgomery, Texas, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will adopt a proclamation proclaiming April twenty twenty one as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Montgomery, Texas. Item number seven on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding adoption of a proclamation designating the week of May sixteenth through the twenty-third, twenty twenty one as Public Works Week. Mike, would you like to read or would you, or Richard? Well, oh, I don't know that I have one up here for you. Oh, sorry. Okay. Sorry, sorry. My bad. I have it right here. Sorry. So National Public Works Week, May sixteenth, twenty-third, twenty twenty one, stronger together. Would you like to read it or would you like me? Okay.
You just have to redirect.
Stronger together, city of Montgomery proclamation, whereas a public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of people of Montgomery, Texas. And whereas these, these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of city government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our city's transportation, water supply and treatment, wastewater collection and treatment, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders and children of Montgomery, Texas, to gain knowledge up and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community. Whereas the year twenty twenty one marks the sixty-first annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Be it now, resolved, I, Sarah Countryman, Mayor of the city of Montgomery, do hereby designate the week of May sixteenth, twenty twenty one, May sixteenth through the twenty-second, twenty twenty one, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our city's health, safety and quality of life. In witness whereof, I do hereby proclaim in behalf of the city of Montgomery. Cause if y'all, we didn't have to boil water during this storm. So I appreciate you. Thank you. Item number eight on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding, oh, I'm so sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation designating the week of May sixteenth through twenty-third of twenty twenty one as Public Works Week.
It is a move to say that we accept the proclamation designating the week of May sixteenth through the twenty-third, twenty twenty one as Public Works Week. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the proclamation designating the week of May sixteenth through twenty, through twenty-third, twenty twenty one as Public Works Week, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will adopt the proclamation designating the week of May sixteen, twenty, through the twenty-third, twenty twenty one as Public Works Week. Okay, number eight, consideration of possible action regarding the city engineer.
Mayor and council, I think as everyone here recalls, back a couple months ago, we went through a statement of qualification process with the city engineers. At that time, it was my recommendation to stay with the firm, Jones and Carter. And what I linked that to primarily was the institutional knowledge of the two engineers who primarily dealt with these accounts. A couple of weeks ago, you know, we were advised that those two engineers left the firm and were going to another firm. And, you know, as I, as I told counsel two weeks ago, I wanted to use the time to come back to city council, make sure I could give the council what was the best recommendation I felt to go for. Uh, what I would like to do, uh, with the concurrence of council in the coming weeks is, uh, I'd like to make the recommendation that city council look to contract the primary city engineering services with Ward, Gibson Associates, which is the firm that Christopher Rosnovsky and Catherine Vu went to. But, you know, I also wanna retain a lot of the services we have with Jones and Carter. You know, they're intimately involved with a number of the ongoing projects that we have that are currently going on. We have our G I S, G I S services through them. And, uh, we have a separate contract with them for drainage on the general land office projects. So there, and I think as most of you know, for the two years I've been city administrator, I've told the council, I think we need to have more diversification in the engineering services. You know, in a way perhaps it checks and balances. We have one primarily working, you know, on the main city account, those the cities here. But we have most of the projects who are contracted out to at least one, if not more firms. And I think this is the perfect opportunity to make that jump. And so with that, you know, my recommendation is, is that I would like to have those discussions and bring those steps forward to council at the next meeting. Essentially that would be if we could come to terms with Ward, Gibson Associates, that would be a separate contract that would replace that element with Jones and Carter. It would also include working out a schedule of how to transition items and identify which items we would continue to work with Jones and Carter on, you know, into the future. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to take those from council, uh, or if I can get some input as this is the direction or not the direction, council would like me to proceed.
Richard, did you look at any other firms? Did you consider any other firms?
You know, if I go back to, uh, back in the month of January, we considered, I think it was originally seven firms that came through the R S T process. Uh, I did go back through, uh, and in, through the submission of the firm that I had as number two, what was it not to be Jones and Carter, Ward, Gibson Associates did not originally submit because they were not planning to seek those services. But now, uh, what they have done in the meantime is they are opening a separate office primarily geared at municipal and district, uh, engineering services. And that is why, uh, Ms. Vu and Mr. Rosowski were hired. And so I, that's why I also believe that they, uh, end up being the best option for us with our services.
Because Chris has a, a history here. You don't, you don't think Jones and Carter or somebody else can, uh, get up to speed quick enough? I guess what I'm afraid is, uh, we might be setting or sending a message, some sort of precedent that if you leave the current firm, uh, we'll go ahead and hire you. Um, that just, that's what it looks like to me optically. And I think we need to look at it a lot more in depth.
I, I think that we, if, if you follow counsel, we've always, Jones and Carter, um, they have K P I's, key performance indicators. And what we've gotten on Chris before in the past is adding more stuff to their, um, to their bids, if you will. And, um, because that's what the big firms like. But we've always liked Chris as a whole and he's, he's been very honest and upfront and forthcoming. And because he knows where the bodies are buried, if you will, with the growing city, it'd be easier to get him, um, moving over because he knows, he knows the city and there's nobody ramping up. And Jones and Carter has someone just pinch hitting out of College Station. So correct, is that still the case?
No, not College Station, but they, they do have other personnel from Memorial who are assigned here, but they have just taken over those accounts.
I just think with the growth here, we need his, we need his knowledge.
And, and if I can, uh, to address, uh, council and Cronin's concern, I, I do appreciate the comment there. I think this is a, uh, this is a unique situation in the fact that the two who had their hands on, left from one firm to another. And the reason originally for the recommendation was primarily because of the, their history and their knowledge. You know, to answer your question, yeah, certainly Jones and Carter could continue to provide those services. They're a large firm with many resources. I don't think they will do it as effectively because of the loss of that transition knowledge. Likewise, you know, we originally received, uh, statements of qualification, I think from seven firms. Any one of those seven firms, you know, could have done the services, you know, we went, from my point of view and the staff's interviews, we're going with the recommendations we thought was the singular best for the city. And that's again, why I'm looking to go this direction. But, you know, I'm only gonna do that with the support of council.
Recently, if I heard you correctly, a second ago, you also said that we still have, we still have contracts with Jones and Carter for other issues, right? So you're saying diversify and have Jones and Carter for those plus.
Right. And that's one thing, uh, yeah, I know you haven't been with the city for my whole tenure, but that's one thing I have, I've consistently said as a city administrator, I thought, you know, you, you, we should look at different firms for the primary engineering services and reviews as we do, you know, for the projects there. You know, there's always, there's always the hint of possibility. I'm not saying Jones and Carter has done that or, and not pointing out figure any other firms. But, you know, you're talking about on one hand studying the needs of the cities and then you're designing the projects, uh, you know, for expansion, meet those needs, water, wastewater, roads and such. You know, I think having multiple engineers who are looking at different ends of that provides the best point of view for the city. And this is, becomes a unique situation of, it's a way to make that happen, you know, you know, more effectively in one step than as the next four or five projects come up.
Is there a way for us to compare apples to oranges, so to say, in regards to, uh, W G A and or some of your other contracts that you'd already looked at back in January? So that we're, I mean, before we compared everything to Jones and Carter. Now we're kinda saying, we're just gonna put them over here and do little things with them. I don't wanna just put all of our eggs in one basket with Chris when I feel like we're basically just left out to dry here without an engineer for a month.
I don't know if that's what you're saying. I think that, I, I think I understand what you're saying. We have, we were wanting to diversify for a while. And so it just so happens, this is, again, the stars align, but we have two individuals that we know and work with just happen to go to another, another company, right? Where we can actually start diversifying and still work with the folks that are clear with us in their city. I mean, that's, that's roughly like an all day going back, you know, I think we still have Jones and Carter as an aspect as well, right?
But you're talking about taking our main contract for the city to W G A.
With Jones and Carter started, they're gonna continue to fulfill. And then the new stuff would go, if it is W G A, that's who would start them.
And my intent is as larger projects come up in the future, you know, one of the things I would intend to do, you know, with, uh, from the engineering end and, you know, in review from the staff end and even including the board committee later this year is to review all of our longer term capacity. Well, at some point in time, we will need to extend additional water capacity. We will need to extend additional wastewater capacity. You know, you know, if things continue as they've been, those designs will, you know, and we make no changes. Those designs will all run from Jones and Carter, you know, the, the same firm, you know, who helps with those will perform the design work and more than likely then administer the contracts all the way through. And so what I would want to do, if we were continuing that way, is that we would, at some point in there, pick, we would have a different firm to pick up once the years identify, you know, carry through from the design forward. Well, what I'm recommending here at this point because it's a, yeah, an unusual situation is that for the time being on the projects we have, we're continuing with the engineering firm who has done that from the beginning, which is Jones and Carter. But switching, you know, the main engineering services as city engineer, you know, to a different firm. It gets us to the same place. Our situation is a little bit unique in how that happens.
So, you know, Chris and Catherine are both very capable engineers, but I do remember a history when Chris was at Jones and Carter and brought us a recommendation that we approved thirty-five thousand dollars in, uh, in billings that they had not budgeted into, I believe it was the bridge. And, uh, we did deny it, but I guess I'm just wondering how you balance, certainly you worked for Jones and Carter at the time. But are you looking at the best interest for your client when you try and bring thirty-five thousand dollars in overcharges that you want approval? So I guess that's, that is kind of in the back of my mind too. I'll do whatever the council wants to do certainly, but I think we really need to study it. Well, again, I think they're both very capable engineers, but their firm's brand new. And are they asking us then to help them get started in, into the, uh, in municipal engineering, basically?
That firm, that firm has done municipal engineering and district engineering. What they're doing is expanding a small element and opening up a larger office that's in the Williams in order to do that. Uh, you know, if the council will allow me to, what I would suggest here is let me have those conversations. If I feel like I can work that out into a workable item, let me, let me bring, uh, Chris and if necessarily other representatives from that firm here to the next council meeting. And let council pose the questions directly to them and let you may, let, let you, let me see how you feel about that at that point and let me chart that.
Richard, has, has Jones and Carter reached out and spoken about this and attempt to keep our references with them since Chris is leaving?
Uh, well, until today, Jones and Carter did not know this was going to be my recommendation. You know, they, they did. Once we had Chris's resignation, Catherine's resignation, you know, they did reach, they did reach out to, to us about transition, transitioning services. And I did have, we did have those conversations. And as I said before, I, you know, ultimately I believe they, as many firms could do, could do it effectively. I'm trying to find what's the best route. Uh, one of the things that I was, maybe I was like less than fully thrilled with was that it was about a week before I heard from Jones and Carter on the beginnings of their transition. And, and, and we do have a representative from Jones and Carter who's gonna provide the engineering report. I will, you know, you know, with, with that statement, you know, he is not the person who is responsible to reach to us. He's the person who is assigned to us, you know, by that person. But it was essentially a week that went by before we got the, began to get the gaps filled in as to here is how we're going to provide services. You know, which is part of my, you know, reluctance to stay with them.
So we can hear more in the next meeting.
Do you need an action add? Is it one term stating?
You know, either, you, 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 you know, either by motion or at least by, you know, hearing from enough input that council wants me to move forward in that direction and have those conversations and bring something more firm back.
I don't know that I'm locked in on just W G A. I'd like to know competitively what's out there. What did you compare in January and what are we looking at now versus just W G A? I have a lot of similar concerns on, it's a new office, new staff. They don't have the G I F stuff that, you know, we're talking about. So I don't know. I would like to see some other options.
I agree. I don't, you know, and, and Jones and Carter's a big firm, but I agree that we don't necessarily need to commit to either one. You know, has Coden reached out to you at all? Um, who's, he's not with Vial, is he?
He's with B G E. And, and the answer to your question is yes.
Okay.
You're there, you're there. You're there, you're there. There are several engineering firms that at least touch base to let me know that, you know, you might remember we submitted, you know, that paperwork back to you, you know, last year, you know, in January. And, and we would certainly be willing to have the engineering services for the city of Montgomery. The city of Montgomery would make a nice client for any firm out there, I guess.
Exactly, I'm with Julie, I think we need to think about it long and hard before we.
I like diversifying, I just want to make sure that there's somebody that has enough field of play to be able to execute and to manage all, I mean, or is that going to be another task for you? That you manage now three different or four, however many we've diversified through engineers? And how do those strings connect back? Because at some point, it all has to come back into the city, and it's just more confusion if we have four or five, three engineers all doing different projects.
It's a good question, I don't think, you know, I've worked places where different items were subjected out to different consultants in the same type of field, whether it be legal or engineering professionally. So that can certainly effectively be managed, I've done that before with regards to the input of council. If you would like me to look a little broader than just one additional firm, I'm happy to do that and then bring that back to you.
The intention wasn't to make a decision at this meeting, was it?
The intention tonight is to make sure, you know, council hears that recommendation from me, and I have, you know, you know, at least the understanding from council, I'll be having these and bringing something more firm back to you. I can do that with, related to more than one firm, if that's what council wants.
Can you do top three? Is that, have you, do you have time to do top three? Can we, top two?
My job is to bring council back what it wants, so.
Why don't we seven? That's what I don't want. Narrow it down for us, Richard, and give us like the best three or something.
That's, that's my thought, hearing that there's some reluctance, some council just quickly go there. Yeah, I, yeah, what I can do is bring that, is bring you at least, you know, the top, what I would consider the top three firms and, and in the intervening weeks here, figure out how to best and effectively work that through council. So that council can be, you know, have a strong comfort level with what's ultimately the final decision.
And references are extremely easy, I'm sure this industry talked to other cities.
Yes, or especially locally. I, I will make that, you know, how I follow through on that. So with that, I don't believe I need that. It's okay then, I'll transition to the city administrator report. I, I think everyone who is, you know, here in person, and there is people watching us to visit, streaming, are all aware that this is our first meeting, you know, in this exact format. And so, so far, I'm pleased to have gotten off without a hitch, I can stay that way. We've, we, we, the staff level went through several practices of this to try and make sure we could get it right the first time. One item I'd like to specifically mention to note is that Marshall Anderson of Boy Scout Troop 491 is participating through the streaming portion of this meeting as part of his Boy Scout activities to observe the actions of local government. And so just point that out to city council for the record. We have, you know, we have out right now is a bid on utility operations, and that should be back to, before, by the mid-May. So I don't think we'll have, we won't be ready for reports to council, I believe, by May 11th, but by the meeting following that, I think we'll have a recommendation. I'd like to add that we, on top of what Kevin Smith pointed out earlier about one of the lines called meetings at the community center becoming, you know, in March, a site for the public health department to fly shocks is, we've been, we've been coordinating with the public health department since then. There was an April follow-up date, or April follow-up date is scheduled for people who receive first vaccinations, and they've already reserved that building for a May date. They will be putting out the information on that because they have, they have the information of how many vaccinations they have for first and second, which type, but they want to point out we are coordinating with the public health department on that. We were, we've been working with the city's financial advisor on providing the information for the bond rating related to the bond refinancing that we approved at a previous meeting. And as I mentioned just a bit earlier, that plan to work with the city engineering and staff and the Torp Committee this coming fall and winter on updating all of the capacity projections and needs and identifying, you know, how far out the timelines are on the next round of extensions for water and wastewater. And then I want to point out that at the last Montgomery Economic Development Corporation meeting, they, you know, they approved the transfer of $160,000 towards city capital projects. City council might, may remember that those funds were budgeted, you know, by the MEDC at the beginning of this fiscal year, which was approved by city council. The city reached a point on the water line extension project that's been going on with new reconstruction that crossed the threshold of $160,000 expenditures. So the MEDC transferred that money, it's been, it, it doesn't show up in these financial reports you have from March that activity occurred in April, so it'll show up in the next reports. But it goes to the capital projects to cover costs essentially with that project. Moving to the development report, residential and commercial markets continue through the first quarter of '21 to show strong activity. We had nine new homes complete, which is a little below the average that we've been having, but it's also during the part of the year that typically construction lags. And, you know, builders are also start, they're starting to run out of lots to build on in the areas that they having mostly Hills of Town Creek. And for new single-family home permits were also approved specifically during the month of March. The Hills of Town Creek has a new 30 lot section that was just accepted earlier this meeting, and they will soon, I think, be ready to move on to the new home sites in that area. Two items under transportation mobility I want to hit on. One is the FM 149 Turn Lane, it's been an item that's been ongoing for a while. In November 2020, TechStop reached back out to the city, you know, on the, on the land that the city had helped to provide to them. Easements, you know, new, an existing easement was found that was still being covered in that property, and the city worked to reach back through to the three easement holders to get those easements released. That is back in the hands of TechStop as of March of this year. And TechStop is planning to relocate the utility and traffic facilities this summer and begin construction of the turn lane in fall 2021. Or, that is the last information we have from TechStop, so. And recently, we also participated in the TechStop 2021 Transportation Alternative Project Call. For us, that was the submission of two projects seeking an 80-20 grant where the city is on the 20% side. In this, for these two, the mobility projects would be a sidewalk project along Martin Luther King Jr. Drive from 149 to, you know, to the city limits. And one project, the sidewalk in the public library area between Memory Park and Bessie Price Owens. And so those are currently waiting to hear back from TechStop. Information I have from the city's administrators' report, and I guess I move down the line, recognize my, my work on public works report.
Well, it is the usual used to be, I'll just run through the brief highlights. We had a pretty quiet month on the water and wastewater side, mainly because of the heavy load we had on building maintenance and park side. For the streets, we repaired two pike holes, building facility maintenance. We removed the wood ramp at the back of the community center, it was rocky. And we painted the, installed the signs for the exchange zone here at City Hall. It's not quite finished, we got the stencil in today to actually write the words, exchange zone. Part of this lot, we'll do that tomorrow. On the parks and rec side, we fresh washed all sidewalks and equipment at all parks, which we do yearly. We completed the annual large ceiling of the capitals at Fernland Park. Fernland Dosens reported 1,204 visitors and provided 74 tours per month. A pretty big month for them, it was a real heavy load for them. At memory park, I don't have to disclose the report, but I did want to add that at memory park, we applied for and received a certified volleyball, that's how we have designation. That's a wide line, volleyball foundation. And then we completed our quarterly hip and trax event, and we had our first Parks Advisor Committee move on in March, which worked very well. So we're making good progress. Any questions?
Is the ramp going to be replaced, or are we just doing away with it because it's handicap accessible from the front?
It's, it's already being accessible and really, we don't need it, so there's already, the way, the way that it comes out of the building, we don't need it.
That's what I figured, I just thought I'd ask, since you kept saying removed, so.
It, it wasn't a full ramp, there was already a concrete ramp there, this was what I think, all the way.
I spoke to several residents that appreciate the, the blue area, they, they sell things online, they meet there, the, and they feel very safe doing so as well as for children to be the swapping point as well, so.
Whether the people have the actual words, it's changed, I don't know. Next up on the morning of the, that's here, all votes for tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Next up, Chief, number 11, police report for March 2021.
I just want to bring up something I forgot before there, but we're looking at the increase in traffic. Increase in traffic does not mean accident, but when I hit, I have the officers take the photos and look at what was calling on accident, just like we call most accidents, distracted by. And that comes from backup, texting, alcohol, pain, riding, ride. And so we're, we're entering into a, a relationship with TechStop and already give some more grants and safety traffic, we're going to use those grants to put some more issue back. I think you've seen our sign out, it's got to give to people that are distracted by. In fact, somebody sent me an email about that, distracted by. But we're going to do more things like that just to try to make sure that we can get these factors down. Because the factor is going to continue to grow. So we've got to make people aware of what they're doing on the back. Our change zone is working out real well. I think they, the guy took a baby, she was three times, and the third time, person didn't show up. I don't know where they're going to be in that, so it's going to be very broken. Our first citizen at least, we'll have, our officer will be, we teach enough classes for the local system. I think it'll be pretty good, we transfer all citizens that are going to be in that class. And we'll have another one each year after that.
How many are attending?
We've got 10 in this class, which is a really good number, but we're really going to have 12 as the personals. And so we've got 10 in this class, and it goes to six weeks. And after that, we'll put it out, we'll increase that normally.
So you're going to try to do like two a year, one a quarter?
No, we'll do one a year, we also have to start the classes that are going to start a month.
I know I asked Officer Graves about this at the MIC fundraiser when I ran into him, but I know our, the city's had DPS patrolling, the sheriff's office, consul's office, and then our officers as well. So when they issue a ticket inside the city, does those, those tickets go to Wayne Maxport, don't they? They don't come here? So is there, I mean, we're forced for miles, they can't just go outside of the city limits and patrol and leave us alone?
That's one of those things, and it's like, also, most of those are able to, well. My argument is that tickets are down at school, here, should have gone here. We've been having, but at some point, what it does for us, we're just going to plan to do it by that, I'm going to say.
Thank you. Thank you for your, you guys did. This Kimberly for the court report for March 2021.
Now, for this cover point, I'll be, and on the mark, we have 15,000 emergency seats, probably season point collection, and 148 citations free. I'd like to know that the city were all being on the last week to start coming to bring our courts. And at that time, we had our two pop boxes, we had show box locked, and now it's running, and still at 10:00. So there is floor, that's how smoothly our court ran. So we're going to probably go over and visit their court as well to kind of help them out. It's out, but, you know, it's recording how they did it for literally working that night in the work department, have a court. So it was a good job, a record night.
That says a lot about your leadership too. Yeah. Thank you.
Any questions?
So I notice money's way up for March, I'm sorry, and if the tickets aren't really up, so are you doing heavier collections, is there, are the tickets just more aggressive where there's multiple citations and they're higher funds, do you know?
Well, it's not necessarily the tickets are more aggressive, we figured out different ways since COVID and things like that happen to be common with the hopes of the rule of the purpose, just different ways of help engaging, to helping them figure out the situation for their side, not just having to collect the money. There's lots of different avenues to pay.
Very nice. Thank you. All right, next up, utility development report, March.
One thing before I cover the utility portion of that report, that mentioned about Kimberly and her court and her staff over there, is we had someone leave a comment on the city's Google reviews page during the last month, and they left a five-star review of the, what they have said were the wonderful ladies that were helping them, and admitted, you know, in the review that it was their own fault that they got a ticket, but they had some wonderful people that they don't.
That is rare.
So I have referred to them maybe a few times as my five-star court. To be honest, so often in online reviews like that, you know, people, who, people who have situations we are not allowed to talk about, you know, take unfair shots at the city. For instance, someone who may have been disconnected for an payment of their water bill, you know, complains because their water is off. You know, it's like, we can't go on there and say, well, they didn't pay their bill, we just have to sit there and allow it. So to see someone leave, you know, a glowing report, you know, even, and then say, oh, it was my fault, they got a ticket and had to go to the court, but the people were wonderful, you know, really warms our hearts to see the positive side of that because the person who left that comment didn't have to do it. Covering the utility report, yeah, pretty close to a routine month, there are several higher dollar collection items I want to touch base on. One was the a little over $4,000 in collection vessel fees related to town creek crossing expenses. There were two receipts of insurance claims. One was from TML on the police department claim, and the other came from Allstate guard rail damage claim. So those are put back to the city. On the city's water accounts, I want to point out we need 872 water connections, and it's just a number that continues to climb, you know, you know, you know, as I mentioned earlier, this coming fall and winter is going to be something to take a close look at, our planning, our future capacities, and put that at the proper place and capital planning. But this is an area where that number, you know, it's, it's climbed since I've been here, and the way people are moving in, and we've got, you know, another 30 lots in the Hills of Town Creek getting ready to become available for construction. There's several homes, you know, under construction right now, which probably just about fill in all the built-in lots. You know, estates of Town Creek Crossing will, you know, I guess by the end of this year, you know, you know, they're working on having 199 residential lots added to it. You know, we have other developers who are looking in the bus, plenty of other areas, you know.
And the camera track closed on Friday.
Yeah, just a perfect example, four to 500 more homes right there. You know, it's, it's very likely in the next four to five years, we're going to double that amount. That, that, it's just a matter of exactly how that plays out. That, you know, those are millions of dollars of expenditures that will be needed, that's why it's important to mind about. Moving along, on the city accounts water usage, I mostly want to draw out the March 2021 memory park pumping was up from 8,000 the last month to 20,000. March 2021 memory park pumping was up from 8,000 the last month to 28,000. That's primarily significant that the water, I'm sorry, the weather was starting to warm up and we went through a bit of a drought period before we had some recent rains. So that's primarily related.
Even the community building is up significantly month over month as well as year over year. And I don't recall March being a heat wave. Is it that significant from 1,000 to 6,000? And then um, also, maybe, yeah, memory park is wild, yeah, was just curious.
The month of March is when we turn the irrigation system back on.
Okay. At the community building?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
For all facilities, everywhere, every place that has the irrigation system, March is when we turn it back on.
So that might be just a matter of time.
Big jumps from historicals. March is when we open Texas back up too, so. So water needed. People were ready to go. Yes.
All right. So thank you.
All right. Um, next up, water report. H T O.
Hey, David. That's weird. Hey, your officer report for March point one. Uh, pretty quite well. We only had one, we'll alert to uh, to report, uh, being that we reported all this stuff last month. We have a leak on the well there, a lot of pictures, you know, the release. So it's pretty easy to replace the air release on there. Page four, we have your wasteland, low detail. For this time period, we poured 722,000 gallons. Uh, daily peak was at March 2nd at 346,000 gallons. And our daily average level was 228,500 gallons. Put this out at 57% of our purpose capacity. Page five is your head month report. I'll sample it twice for month of March and told me what happened. Page six is your water report. We, the month total, 10.1 million gallons. Uh, had a push down 843,000, which there was so, it's the number three for three, for another mine, we're sorry, city. Uh, bringing us to a 94% time ability.
So that's what that is because y'all were doing well at 98%.
Yeah, and we were then uh, one of the increases uh, towards the end of the week is when this this time period started and less everything was following out and uh, we're preparing leaks at facilities and I'm like, that's a good place to do that.
We start to get nervous when we see that number go down.
Yes, man. We're uh, I think next month will be a lot of there.
Okay.
Uh, page seven is your balance, that's our team on this, we're showing where it's full of water. And page eight is your water accountability for thirteen months, we're showing the better monster that stopped them off. Um, so it's all my other reports, man. If anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Anthony Lasky.
Good evening, Mayor, Councils, first time we get to do this.
That's true.
All right, my name is Report. I'm on page number 79 on your report, page three online. I just don't really uh, account analysis would do. We did have over 3,000 CDs that we purchased for the general fund. In total, we're at 750 months uh, operating reserve. Just before that you can import uh, pretty N E D C, you have trouble of roughly 23 months reserve almost two years and for the utility fund, almost a year for about 11 months. So to the next page, cash flow report for your uh, for your general fund, uh, we did collect 306,201 dollars and four cents in sales tax for month of March 2021. Also, on that, we have probably exceed for the home grant, first 1,000 under, which offsets at the bottom of the page, page five, uh, with that was administrative piece for the home grant. Towards the middle of the page, we had uh, check 31034 for AB Design Pros and that's for that first installment of the live stream package that you all purchased. Uh, we have a check point, which will be on page six, 104, and your yearly um, audit is just 112,000. Normal on that side. Running the page number 11 on our 427, um, is your budget. We are halfway through fiscal years, present thing that we're all halfway through. Uh, we collected 215,000 in sales tax from the April, which will show on your next report about roughly 53,000 for N E D C fund, rest of that 6,000 or so in the general fund. Uh, just pointing out a few of the highlighted revenue lines for adware taxes, uh, we collected roughly 97% of your adware as a current, as a current. Last year, we were about 93% or so, so that's a pretty decent increase there. For your sales tax, um, we had roughly 1.1 million or so last year. We're at 1.4 right now, so about 24% increase uh, on that. And then another section that I found interesting was the funds. They were a lot, they were lower last year, roughly around 147,000 or so, or up to 191, which is definitely a lot for activity and that's roughly about 29% or so of increase for that. So in your revenues, if you take out the home grants, um, you have a total of about 2.6 million excluding those funds. So if you take that with what we had roughly last year, which is just a little over 2 million, it's about 29% of the 29% of this revenue this year. And this is all during this time last year in March that I recorded. For your expenditures, um, just little, mostly little, this is a mere four or five percent of some of your expenditures, uh, personnel roughly around four percent of increase for your uh, for the uh, debt services, roughly around 12% of an increase uh, from last year at this time of this year. The biggest one that I point out for is going to be family traveling training. It's a lot lower this year. A lot of it has to do with all virtual trainings that we've had throughout the course of this fiscal year, and it's down considerably. Uh, we had about 30,000, about 30,000ish uh, last year at this time. We're only about 14 or so. So going through and then also just uh, going through the total expenditures, uh, taking out that 423,000 in home rate expenditures, we have roughly around 1.8 million or so um, current. At around this time, we were, we're actually only about four percent of an increase if you take those expenditures out from where we were um, last year at this time. But very interesting, and also the main numbers come up. We should see how that is, especially since we have gotten roughly 450,000 back in February and this being another quarterly file in the month coming up, though this is really interesting to see what we get. Uh, doing so well so far. Okay, I made a 800 thousand in it. Uh, just to point out on the uh, capital projects, there's really one thing going on this time. Uh, as Richard did point out earlier, we did, uh, we did transfer from the N E D C fund to the capital projects fund, 160,000 that has been done and it will show on your next month's report, uh, that transfer. But the only other thing on here is for your downtown water improvement project, uh, so far, 164,000, uh, that's been reported. There was an okay estimate that we did uh, pay, so we're up to, I think that was about 207,000. Uh, so we're up to about 371,668 dollars, that's on that, missing this project. And then just a couple of other numbers, uh, you know, there's still uh, uh, from your income items that you perceive thus far, actually, I'm on page number 144, on the cash flow. Uh, one item I just want to point out is the sewers on the uh, general 279, that was best in the exterior. That was just for your best installation, 23,975, that was the, I just wanted to point that out, that was uh. Now going on to your budget on that side.
Which one? Was Sancho.
Yeah, Sancho story. Uh, going through to you, uh, to your budget on the water sewer side, about 16% increase from last year to uh, from last year to this year, uh, we were 1 million in that side. Most of that being just higher uh, questions as far as your water and sewer and attack rates. And for your expenditures, a little bit higher as well, uh, about 15% increase or so. So we do have a slight less of a, of a, and our last year, but we're still doing very well.
Doing great news. Thank you. Good stuff. Appreciate you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Sales tax report, Richard? Nope, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
Okay, uh, good evening, Board of Council. Some of the test dozens of meetings, uh, total dozens to not was uh, over here was not obviously, but Steve's wrong and things like that. Uh, you all should have a copy of the old sales tax report. Uh, the first page and the second page, just those that I analyze at home through how we do our job, what we're into district, how we look for certain factors of our reports. Uh, the main uh, meeting report begins on the very age three, uh, on my hand. Um, the last time, what we'll do is we will periodically go out and do fiscal canvassing in this district. Now, last time we did fiscal canvassing, it was five months ago, the pandemic was a little bit strange. It funny, we operate on my land, uh, right near the bigger where it was. And it was interesting because we were out and found competitive planets, which was 227 sales tax categories and apples, the largest number of physical sales tax categories in the district. Nick, you know, pressure from all addresses in home business. Uh, as anyone will tell you, uh, the dynamic shifted from people are not certain when the law is, unless you're before the home. So what we're seeing is sales tax payers for the district, but not from the physical reporting needs. And it's it's it's, we're seeing that in all of our lives. So it's uh, the cloud and the offices and the, let's say it's the one holder who already seen that this is a cross. On page four, what we do is month, we look at control of both accounts, total active taxpayers are quoted in the district, there's plenty of commerce as well. There was 5,000, so many, there's barely one active taxpayers that could at one point in time, like sales tax, or a full fast rate. The actual one for April 2021 was 1,897 for active hours. I'd say more seats aside, uh, 95% of those. Um, April was when we started aiming with the pandemic and then April 2021, it was 1,710 taxpayers. We were happy to get those, but this year we saw a 95% increase. So we're arguably ahead of that much here. Sales tax allocations for April of 2021, so as I mentioned, we involve there are two date ranges where you deal with sales tax. There's how many years you have. For May, uh, identifier is March and February, the following, that then pays true dollars and cents that was spent in the district in actually the fourth month. So for your power, you're 1,217,000 system improvement. For the count, for your tax year, 521,000 for all days. You'll see that we have a top 25 sales tax files, 12 months, 1234, you see the breakdown of the lowest time in 63. Uh, in all, 1,838,000 just on top of the final one. On page six, we'll see that we'll, that's the top sales tax file, not 45,000. Uh, so it was down in all, it was top of those 25,000, 133,000, which is 50% of the top sales tax. Also, what I'd do is like, look at how many businesses we have over 1,000 blocks, high dollar, we have 62,000, 62%. We had 48 businesses in the month, like, oh, there's 48. Oh, there's where.
See, there's jewelry. Jay Neumann's on here. I'm like, how much money, I mean, how much jewelry did someone?
That's a picture of hardware, 125,000. That's easy to understand, you can spend 10,000 dollars on a coffee. Someone has various.
Silver paper holder.
Very well, they'll hold on the 26. Uh, on page seven, March and April side by side, again, none of these months quoted final months price. This is like, Rover's on there, next month, literally quoted five months, you see a higher number of sales tax files, because it was a higher final one thousand. Uh, on page eight, as mentioned, uh, I look at net sales in the month. And so 96% sales tax proceeds so far, coming from businesses that are located here. And April, there were 99 businesses that were physical, where it was paid for, uh, 1,788,000 in Thomas space. So January, December, 1995, I'm sorry. The city, the city, you see 34,811, 927,96. We'll draw them down, we have to fix this all time, I have a list, all of this, but I'll fix this and I'll stretch measures more. For 215,000 to those 63. On page nine, what I'd do is look at two on the top, sales tax categories, we'll see 20, we'll see this market, which is still the one. In all, uh, from April 2020 to April 2025, 201,000 for one. So what we're going to add now is we're, we're now in 2021, we're starting preparing, starting in February of last year, going over each month, uh, where our sales tax files were quarter dollar months for, how does that compare now, because we're in the middle of the pandemic, what, what does it look like side by side? And so that new graph, before probably what I did was April 2021. I love February here, this February represents actual dollars and cents that I did interest and made up for April allocation. And what we're going to do is we're going to change a little bit more towards this more career, but I want to be able to clearly see each month as we went through last year and prepare this year, so we know how far ahead of the time we're on. Uh, for your fiscal year today, 291,000, which is a package, 3.5%. But we're showing a median allocation each month, 304,000 per person. On the unit page scan, we have the practical laws for 2021, again, only four months represented in 2021. Uh, month to month variances, you'll see we'll have four who filed them up, that's red versus black. Uh, nothing to be upset about a way over, that's just a high value, just a little bit previous years by months. And then lastly, on page 14, we have definitions of annual score. But that concludes my report. And I'm happy to answer any questions which you might have coming, anything you'd like to address specifically.
On page five, we have Amazon list selling there twice. One as marketplace and one as just an LLC services. Do you know what the differences between the two?
I don't know individually what their differences are. I will say that every city, especially, like, what is local tax, has Amazon and Amazon marketplace. Uh, also, I've actually seen a, other Amazon, uh, global top 25. So there's three credits coming out of Amazon and one for us.
Is one like maybe Amazon Prime or something like that, like their subscription based?
You know, I think that one might be based on their, other classes are just basically I spoke, I should go get into what their sales tax permit is, it doesn't, no.
I was just surprised that two made the top 25. That's a lot. I expected one.
Again, um, we'll have to ask that.
And ship to the door and deliver to your port. I did notice that there was hydroelectric on here too. I wondered, I was like, okay, people are serious about this electricity, nothing else. Thank you. Very, very, thank you. Appreciate you. All right. 17 inch report.
My name's Connor, just parts, uh, the pin hitter, I think, or whatever. I just wanted to, uh, just to respond to what you're asking here and to make sure you get good service. And if it needs transition, then we'll help you with that and then we'll, we'll, if that's if that's a, yes. Um, let me introduce myself and uh, God Bergen, I'm, I'm one of the operations managers at Thelma Carter. I'm one of the guys that make sure the right folks get married by the rest of that. Providing something and providing quality product on time, if someone cares, and that's, you know, we really love to be your engineer, continue being your engineer. Let me tell you also about what we did with the, with the departure of the previous engineer. We've rallied some resources, I mean, I've done program management for about half of my career, and I'm personally the engineer for East Portland, that and development authority. Did a lot of work for them, not Call station, but.
That's an asterisk.
And I've worked either one of the, either the mill or the K D's office, I'm a part of the last one, my office is the one, one. We did rally some resources to make sure that we got this engineer, support, could get it for you, West of A, young engineer, really did a lot of the work, digging in. And speaking on, you're making phone calls, contracting developer, and get the staff, I wish to, Michael in the field, and Chris, in the, in services. Hopefully, good doing, good job. You know, some G L brands and, I funded budgets, we pulled Matt Brazil, who's just brilliant with that kind of stuff. And, and he was able to put together some, some things that I think they had been drawn out a little while, he was able to pull it together, and make sure that, that comes here too. On figure out, so, thank you for letting me share that a little bit with you, let's know when we are still. And I'm gonna go ahead and go through the engineering report for you. On downtown water line, replacement, we estimate about forty-five percent complete. We are still working with tech staff to finalize the control of the process, one forty-nine, that's a little bit, uh, waiting for that final utility permit, but come from the best out, first time. We do have an action item for pay us, we can just free them out, two hundred and seven thousand dollars for them to, on that, on that contract. Wanted to let you also know, we, we met with one of your constituents in the field, just to kind of build a, making sure that the relationships go well. Contractor, contractor, we've spent the field, one, one, just stood out there and made sure that, that thing here, well, can pay to report. On the Baja Road, M F A, projects there, we'll work with the contractors, we'll, the collaboration them. I've seen the water line improvements. These, these sponsors are, they've bought it, they've seen practice and staff, who, who, who signed the contract. And, and you grew, working with contractors, and city staff, I would say, spent some robust work, I was in. Yeah, I have the listation number one, replacement. This, this is where the contract went over, it's on time. We're actually developing. Those, clearly not our facilities, but, finally used, we can express, those plants are under review. We actually have companies, credit, we've, we've got an engineer, hyper views, we have three of them, the system, we use the sign, and other, we're, we're. People are setting agenda for the acceptance of those town, section four, under item D there. And then empty crossings, which one, where the, which one. On the one meter warranty, partners, the villains of the lava, section two, they're just, oh, one, yeah. And driving on a little bit of those, and here with them, here with that, we want to make sure.
Who's the developer, or the contractor? Do you know?
I don't know, we're the contractor. Going to go down to the ongoing activities here. I'm paid at one forty-nine, this is, that's what, off here.